We're getting now into regular meeting and it's 6:32. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the following warrants. We have a payroll warrant for 11/21/18 for $168,374.22. An expense warrant for 11/20/18 for $10285.87. Approve a wire warrant for 11/28/18 for $17.88. Approve an expense warrant for 11/28/18 for $51.90. Approve an expense warrant for 11/28/18 for $95,693.50. An expense warrant for 12/4/18 for $639.33.
You have that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Then we want to approve selectmen's minutes from 10/23/18.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And we want to approve reports and minutes from other departments. Fire reports from August, September, October, and November. And cultural council minutes from 11/5/18.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
Yes, I had them right out here. Then we have some anniversaries from the fire department. We have Captain Richard Phillips. He has been with us for 18 years. Lieutenant Jeffrey White, he's been with us for 14 years. And I'd like to congratulate the two of them and continue service for many more years.
Thank you. One quick question about reports and minutes. One thing I'd like to see is more regular written reporting from both the treasurer and the accounts office.
Okay.
So Karen, if you could make a note to reach out to them and if they have any questions about format and some like-
Do you want it quarterly or do you want it monthly?
I'd like to see it monthly until we get comfortable as to exactly where we're at and then we can discuss extending that to quarterly.
Then we have announcements. We have a public vision session of the senior center will take place at 10:00 a.m. Wednesday, December 12th in the banquet room in the town hall. Determining residents, programming priorities will be crucial in planning and designing a space that suits the needs of the Brookfield seniors and the town as a whole. All residents are encouraged to join the conversation. Coffee and refreshments will be served. And then a reminder that the winter parking ban is in effect from November 15th through April 1st for all public ways in the town during the hours of 11 o'clock, p.m. to 6:00 a.m. No parking on the streets whether or not snow is predicted. Anyone in violation will receive a citation of $25 for the first offense. So, anybody else have any announcements or anything to say? All right. Now we're going to go into classification hearing and we'll have Al June who was our principal session.
How you doing? So after we did this last year and I think it had always been done kind of informally and I thought maybe we should have something written up. So I had started working on it and then Karen came over the other day and said, "Hey, can you write up something?" So I said, "Beautiful." So this is kind of, you know, I went out and saw what other towns do. And what I wanted to do is just have this first page that says, even though I can- There's three basic areas we need to talk about. The first one is the most important and that is where if we had a lot of commercial and industrial and we wanted to shift the burden, larger cities do this, Worcester, Pittsfield, you know, the places that have bigger, bigger commercial that they can rely on. If we were to put the maximum out on the commercial, it probably would make a penny difference in our tax rate and we would proceed to, there'd be a lot of animosity from any of the businesses. So my recommendation, it's your discussion and vote, but my recommendation would be stay with a tax factor, with a factor of one, which means that all commercial, industrial, personal property, residential are at the same tax rate.
Do you have that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is one people come in and ask about and it's the residential exemption. The cities like Watertown, Cambridge, Boston, they do it and they say, "Okay, if you are a homeowner in the town in that city, maybe the first $100,000 you don't pay taxes on." They get away with it by charging additional for the apartments. Then you get into like Provincetown, Barnstable, Nantucket where they have the heavy duty people that live out of town that have these heavy duty tax bills and then the high assessments right along the ocean. So they pay a premium and everybody that lives in town, first $100,000 they don't pay on. We don't have anything like that to rely on. So this is normally one that you would not adopt, but I felt like we should just please discuss it so if anybody comes forward and says, "What does this mean?", now everybody has a little better idea. So if you want to do the motion not accept-
Yeah, I will make a motion not to accept the residential exemption.
I'll second.
And then the last one is a small business exemption.
Vote.
Oh, vote, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
The last one is small business exemption and I don't know anywhere where this happens. It's probably designed more for cities. It doesn't, what it does is it helps small businesses get going. In our case, what we would have to do is you would take, you know, let's say up to 10% of their value and you'd put it on that big industrial complex that we don't have. So we would be shifting it amongst ourselves so that although it sounds great, there's no benefit to the town of Brookfield. So again, I would propose that you vote not to adopt this.
All right, I'd like to make a motion not to accept the small business exemption.
I want-
Do you have a question?
I have a second for, but let's do some discussion.
Well, we can bring up and discuss it, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I'll second, but a little discussion around this one. I think I'm on board with not doing it this year, but I'd like to understand, because I know with larger cities and towns, there are times where they offer a specific to entity coming in.
Like a tip.
Exactly.
Yep, that would be separate than this.
That would be separate.
Yes, that would be specific.
So we would still have the option if somebody came forward with a business proposal, but in order to get kicked off to do it, they were looking for a little bit of help, we could do something like that.
Absolutely. This isn't across the board thing, so that you say, and it has to be, the building's got to be worth less than $1,000, a million dollars, 10 or less employees, which we probably have some that qualify, but again, we, you're not going to shift it anywhere.
We don't have anywhere to put it.
If we had a General Motors plant, if we had a G.E., if we had something like that, then you go to them and say, "Hey, can we shift 1% or 2%?" And, you know, but we don't have that. So we could adopt it, but it wouldn't do anything except confuse everybody and everybody would end up paying the same amount.
No, I understand.
But a tip would be very different.
We have various businesses here in town and plus a lot from your little mountain pop businesses.
Right, so most everybody we have in town would fit this fall business exemption and doesn't have anywhere to go.
If they owned the facility, if they owned the building too. So if they didn't own the building, then it's, you know, if they're a tenant, then it would be a moot point.
But you actually answered my question, is if there was something specific that we were trying to generate, then at least we'd still have that option even?
Sure, just like a pilot. You know what I mean? It would be, you know, it would be handled, I would assume similar, obviously be different wording, but you would say, "Okay, for this period of time, we'll give you a break of 10%, 9%, 8%, 7%, you know, work it down to zero and then you're right on." That's the way I understand them, but-
Okay, fair enough. Awesome, thank you.
So we want to take a vote?
Yes.
All in favor, June?
Aye.
And then the second page of this is just a breakdown. This is what the state has approved. This gives you our 2018 parcel counts, 2019, and the changes in approved assessed values. Because we don't, if you look down at like industrial power plant, you see 100% increase. That's because we added two solar. So because we have such small numbers in some of these categories, you know, a couple of places shifted from three family to four family and all of a sudden we're up, you know, 12, 40%. I mean, there's all these-
100%.
So yeah, so you don't look at the percentages, look at the numbers. And then we, if you'll see open space and it's a zero, very few towns qualify as open space. Our open space is all under chapter 61. Not all, but it falls under, chapter 61 falls under commercial. So that's how that, so we're actually, it doesn't get taxed as commercial, but that's where it comes through. So open space should be zero for us.
So I do have a quick question.
Sure.
It looks like corporations is separate, is its own separate strat with this?
Mm-hmm. I'd have to look up this, but this is, there's under, under, let's say corporations, there's a bunch of different, like the wire manufacturing next door could, it probably falls into that because I don't, because there's nothing in manufacturing.
Right, okay.
And it's, it's a-
Yeah, I'm surprised it doesn't just fall under industrial, that's all. It seems odd that it gets its own category.
I'd have to look at the, I mean, again, it really, wherever it's categorized, it really does not matter to us because they're going to pay the same-
We're going to say it anyway.
The tax rate stays the same across the board. If you want me to look into that, I can.
It's okay, it's minutia.
Again, it's, when you look at it, you know, it shows you 60 different options.
Right.
And so whether is it industrial storage, is it industrial manufacturing, is it, you know, there's all these different-
Classification.
Yeah, within it, yeah.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Cool. Does that make it a little clearer because it's better than just, we're just talking and then you're afterwards saying, "What the heck did we talk about?"
And how are we doing on setting the tax rate?
Um, we are, the tax title stuff got done today. Mike Siri finished all his stuff this week. The values are set, so we are, Carrie's today and tomorrow, or tomorrow and Thursday, I think today and tomorrow she's going to be with Justin. So a lot of it's on Carrie right now, a lion's share if it is anyways. So I've been hoping that mid to late next week, so what happens is we have to, we have to fill out, I don't know, there's probably 25 different things. We've probably done 12 to 14 of them now, but a bunch of them start, when Carrie starts filling in her numbers, they start populating other sheets. So once that's all done, the bell goes off at DOR and they'll get on the phone and they'll come through and they'll say, "What's the question here? What's this? Why had this change? I need to see the actual published tax classification hearing notice from the newspaper." They have all these things. And then once they are set, and it'll probably be, like I say, a week, week and a half, on the beta side, which is the billing piece, all the data's there, they checked off today, everything married up, so they're happy. Brenda has half of the bill, the back half of all the bills printed and as soon as we get the okay, she'll stop printing. And what we're going to try to do this year is have, you know, like a half an hour where everybody, the town employees come on in, let's all fill out rather than just Brenda or Brenda or me filling them out.
We did that years ago.
Do a polling party?
Just do a quick polling party, even if we don't get them all, get 80% of them and then, and, you know, and have a little, have a little thumb up it too, so, so that's where we are.
Okay, that's good. Okay, I'll thank you. Our next one is with Andrew Lowe, Andrew would like to come up. Okay, we're going to do with Andrew, it's the FY17 CDVG performance hearing.
I just have a handout I'm going to, available to folks in the audience on your pack. You folks already have this, I believe, in your packs. Okay, so again, my name is Andrew Lowe, I'm here from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. I'm here tonight to do what's called a performance hearing. This is a hearing that's a required portion of a community development block grant. And as I think most people here will be aware, CMRPC is helping to manage two different CDVG grants on behalf of the town. This hearing relates to the first of those two grants. This is the FY17 CDVG grant. And just as a little summary here, so this is a grant that ultimately starts with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and, oh, thank you, and it's passed through from HUD to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, which operates a competitive grant program for smaller communities. Brookfield was lucky enough to be awarded about $364,000 for this grant. Again, it's FY17 grant. And the purpose of this hearing is really just to give the board and members of the audience an opportunity to comment or ask questions about the projects that are within the grant. So what I'll do is I'll just give a quick summary, that's the same information that's on this handout, of the four projects that are funded under this grant. And the first one is the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. I was actually here at your last meeting to talk about the draft final version of that plan. That plan is a, a planning consultant team was hired to help the town to evaluate its current compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act and related state statutes and to develop a plan for transition to greater compliance. So there was an evaluation of programs and services as well as a detailed review of all town facilities. As I mentioned, the draft final plan is complete. I believe that the consultant team is expecting to wrap that up by next week now, so it'll be a fully final plan. And I should say that completion of this kind of plan is a requirement of the ADA. So having this plan will enable you to seek a variety of other grants that you're not currently eligible for and it will also protect the town liability-wise from concerns on ADA, at least from some concerns on ADA. The next project is the Hayden Hyde and Draper High Improvement Project, design phase project. So this is a civil engineering project. An engineering consultant was hired to design drainage, water, roadway, and pedestrian improvements in these two neighborhoods where existing infrastructure is outdated and/or in poor condition. So bid-ready plans and specifications were prepared to enable construction funds become available in the future. The Hayden Hyde design is complete and I should say that the Hayden and Hyde area was the subject of the town's FY18 CDVG grant, which is going to fund construction in that area. And the design in the Draper and High area is complete pending Mass Department of Transportation review of the proposed drainage improvements. My understanding is that a meeting is scheduled for this week or will be scheduled by MassDOT. And when I say scheduled, they'll just say when they're going to be there and then the consulting team and the highway department folks have to just be there when they're out there. But once that's done, then the design phase will be completed in its entirety. The next project is the 15 Post Road Environmental Site Assessment Study. That's the old Finney Service Station site. That one is an environmental engineering project and again, a consultant was hired to do that one and that was essentially, the scope is to test the soil, groundwater, and other media at this former service station for contaminants and to make any required regulatory submittals for the site assessment. Information from the study will inform the future cleanup needs and reuse options for the site and will enable the town to make a decision on potential acquisition of the site pursuant to future cleanup and redevelopment. So that one's underway right now. They've been out of the site over the last month or so doing a variety of different kinds of sampling. I know they're going to be going back out again before the worst of the winter weather comes in, we hope. And we should have the final report for that by the spring. And we will be having a couple of public events as part of that, so once we get some information on that project, we can talk a little bit more about what the contamination, if any remaining, means for potential reuse options at that site. And the last project is the Senior Center Architectural Design Project. An architectural consultant was hired to develop a program and a bid-ready design for rehabil- excuse me, rehabilitation of most of the lower level in this building into a future senior center, so that it's kind of part of the larger effort to rehabilitate the building. That's ongoing as well. That one will actually be having a public event on December 12th right here in this room. I believe it's at 10 o'clock in the morning. And we'll be talking a little bit more about what features folks would like to see from a future senior center in terms of what components it has and how it's arranged. And then that will be translated into a more detailed design for a senior center. So that's the quick summary of these projects. I'm happy to take questions from either the board or the audience about any of them.
They look pretty well set, nobody has any questions?
Well, just the only thought that I have is that Kathy LaRocque, our grant writer facilitator, is participating and working very closely with Andrew because as Andrew went through these, what these do is they set us up for additional grants and grant funding. So by Kathy being really shoulder to shoulder with Andrew and what Andrew's doing, it puts us in a position for Kathy to move forward with these additional grants.
Yeah, that's exactly the intention of all these projects, is to be a first step with the follow-up actions to come later.
And with regards to the construction phase, it's part of the 2018 CDVG. Herb, I see that you're back there. Is this, are they in pretty, I know that Cindy's on the CDVG grant committee, but is she tied in with what the planning is going to need to be around the-
The contract work itself?
Yeah.
That's one of the business work that, who asked that project comes from that.
Fabulous. Okay, great. So that's going to be mostly contracted out?
It's all going to be contracted.
That one's all contracted.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks.
Do you want to switch?
Yeah, we have time. We actually have time.
Yeah, okay, why don't, why don't we bring up, bring Herb and Peter up and we'll discuss the cab. We're going to take it out of order and do number six and discuss the cab and chassis for the fire department.
Do you want a motion to move it out of order or not?
Yeah, could I have a motion?
You have a motion to move it?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, no, when she's ready, I'll just-
So I'm here because at a special time meeting a couple weeks back, we did appropriate money because we ran into that issue where we had a failure on the chassis, on the 1986 chassis that houses Forestry 2. And we did have that opportunity to move money around because that was on the CDB, not CDB, capital improvement, CIPC plan for next June anyway, so putting money into basically seven months wasn't practical. The figure, I believe, was 46, 47.5, 47.6, something like that.
I think it was 46.7.
Okay, I'm a little bit of a dyslexic, kicking around, but we'll, I'll get that from Mike or from Carrie. We've looked around at chassis that are suitable with the plan being, the plan that was floated some time ago by the CIPC, that this truck would start its life with the fire department and then after a few years would be transition to the highway department. So we're basically looking at our needs and the highway department's needs down the road and highway department's needs are a little bit more rugged, a little bit more, a little beefier for its long term, which worked out because that meant that whatever needs he has for it or his, whatever at that point, would definitely suit our needs. And what we came up with was what you have in front of you. This is from MHQ, which is pretty much a preeminent public safety, public utilities vehicle contractor in the state. This truck, as you see, is a leftover. It's a 2016, but it was never moved. They, they bought it, they, usually all their stuff is all cookie cutter, but occasionally they buy something and just load it up completely. That way, if somebody comes, they don't sell anything to the public, so this was always planned to be either DPW or, you know, Parks Department or a fire truck. And since 2016, now we're in the model year 2019, it'll still be full warranty, it's only got maybe a couple hundred miles, just probably moving it around the yard the last three years. The original list price on this was, if I'm looking correctly- Oh, it was actually much higher. Originally, this truck was 44.6, but when Herb spoke to these individuals, the salesmen's on there, because they do want to move it and we just expressed an interest, they came down to 40, $40,995. It does meet all the needs that the highway, that fire department needs initially and that the highway department would need in time. So I'm appearing before you, is asking your permission to go ahead on this. The fear, like always, is this squad's good for 60 days, but if somebody shows up, is ready to move on it, so I would-
I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid.
One second.
All in favor?
So that's $40,995. That gets us the chassis here. We feel that we can outfit it with the warning devices, we don't need to buy switches. This actually has switches built into it, like modern Fords do. We have sirens from previous vehicles, but we will need some items to move the vehicle over. So it also asks that the balance, whatever the dyslexia came out to be of the $40,995, that would be authorized to spend up to what was appropriate at the STM to finish the outfitting. Relatively confident we can pull that off. If not, we'll see what we can do in-house or we'll just forego anything till the future. So if you want to make a motion, if there's no objection.
Oh, I'll make a motion. Do you want to spend up the $46,000?
$47,005.
$47,005, okay. Whatever the appropriation was at the STM.
Whatever we voted to.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
So in time-
All in favor?
So in time, when, when this is on board, we'll have the RMD one form either from MHQ or from Mr. Joseph sign and then we'll just begin the process of registration of everything and, you know, it's, best case within the, you know, we should have it in the next couple weeks, best case, but I'll keep the board apprised through Karen as to our progress on where we are.
And well, job well done, you went around looking.
We did, we, I mean, we checked, just because we know them, you know, we checked our local friendly Ford dealership. For something newer with a lot less features, it was 48. And here we're at $40,999. Because they want to move this. And the first thing, if you happen to look down on line five, it's white. And when that came up, and when that came at the fire station, it was, the truck's white and everybody just kind of shrugged their shoulders and said, "So, you know, we need a truck, you know." There's only a couple things we would have objected to, so.
Well, we're trying to get rid of your other white truck.
Well, we're maintaining a white truck, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Victor.
Okay, now, now we'll go back to number four.
Do you have a order?
To regular order on number four, we'll open space project and I'll turn that over to Mr. Snare.
So you should have in your folder, maybe not, the contract, oh, okay, so, all right. So we have a contract, we have been sent by the grant administrators, the contract for funding up to $10,000 of a grant for the open space work. What we had all talked along is that CMRPC would actually, in fact, similar to the CDVG, they would administer this one and then we would then have Kathy participating so that any follow-on grants related to open space would actually be conducted that way. What I was hopeful of doing tonight, but CMRPC did not get a chance to get it to us, is a letter that outlines their scope of supply or their commitment to the project. So what I would say is, because it didn't get in for this meeting, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting, but this gives us an opportunity to solicit anybody that is interested in sitting on the open space committee to in fact let Karen know that there's an interest on their behalf to begin to participate. Because what I would hope that we do is we sign the contract at the next meeting- It's all of these things that need to be looked at, looked upon. Good, thank you.
Okay. Our next one is, it's a hearing, it's at seven, I would just make it, it's a hearing on the Brookfield Auto, on Post Road over here. Gentlemen, would you like to come in?
Evening.
Evening.
Welcome.
Welcome. We've had some complaints come in about the business, what you're doing. We have, let's see, one.
Three written complaints.
This, that, three written?
One gentleman in the audience, yeah.
We have three written complaints, and we have a gentleman here in the audience that probably come up and tell his complaint. And then we also, this is one that also went to the Attorney General's Office, the consumer complaint form, that somebody filed also.
That's one of the complaints.
That's one of the complaints, too, there. Okay, so, you all have copies?
Do you have copies?
Do you have copies of them?
We have, I only have, we...
I gave you all, I got one last one today to give you.
Yeah, that one I know. Frank only has the two.
Which, that's the gentleman that's right here, so maybe he can just speak.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So how do we want to handle this going over?
Well, it's different time periods also. I don't know if you're familiar, what we had is, we had, you know, a business that was done prior to May of this year, and it was under different sales management, and now it's completely different sales management, so things are being done dramatically, different way. So even though this has happened, we're trying, we're trying to address all of these complaints the best way we can. But again, you know, we are, we have different procedures in place right now, so, you know, whatever is being done is actually, customers are top to, make sure that it's all satisfactory, you know, whether it's service or sale of a car. So it's, you know, follow-up on all of these procedures in completely different way than it was done before. So, I mean, unfortunately, we cannot return the past, but, you know, whatever we can help, you know, whatever the complaint is, to resolve it, we will try to do, and we're still working on it. Unfortunately, I didn't get any of these complaints, and we didn't get them at the business. Because, you know, if I knew about them, it's best to resolve them right at the time that they happened, not wait so much and people get aggravated and, you know, they start complaining everywhere else. That's not the way to do it. But, you know, what I'd like to ask you guys, if it's ever possible, if you get a complaint, mail it to us right away. Because sometimes what happens, people will get upset, and they will not talk to anybody else except they'll go to you, or they'll go to the state, and they will not communicate to us. Where maybe we could have done something to remedy the situation.
Well, I was, I was up here when two of them had come in one time. And they were both, you know, they were both same citizens. And one of them said that his credit has never been, he's always had good credit, and one of whom, his credit is gone now because of an incident that happened to you. And he was very, you know, he was very disheartened about the whole thing.
That's the thing, you know, this whole situation was continuing for a while. I wish he could, you know, he complained to either you or when, you know, wrote a direct letter to the business this way.
Well, he said, he said that he went over and he talked to your salesman you had over there, and they couldn't, they wouldn't help him out.
That's part of the problem. Because like I said, you know, we had sales management that was not acting the way they supposed to be. And I wish this was communicated even through a letter, so I could receive it at the mailbox and I could, you know, go and, because I'm not there like 200% of the time, so sometimes I'm not there, and things happen. But as you know, you know, sometimes when salespeople do wrong things, they will not communicate it further because, you know, they're afraid of the job or whatever. And there's a motivation not to communicate. But if I had another channel of communication, I'd definitely address the issue. Because I don't do business like that. But unfortunately, this whole situation with that gentleman was continuing for a while, actually. It was not just, you know, because his payment, it was months, probably two months. And there was no communication whatsoever, except with the salesperson, who obviously did not communicate it any further for obvious reasons. Because, you know, there was reason to not to communicate information.
And then another one we had also here was about, somebody had some worn tires on the vehicle. And I guess he came over to you, and you gave him, told him he could obtain the tires at a lower cost from you. And I guess the tires were much higher than what he originally quoted.
Well, this is actually, I'll explain it a little more.
Michael Mastrositou.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Michael is, as I explained, Karen, is a friend of the garage. He's a friend of the shop. Michael has driven cars for us. Michael's been around for some time. Michael actually helped me get into some places. And, so I don't really understand how this all came about, so.
Because I was here the day he came up on this, this one too, and he was pretty upset about it.
Right. So what I brought was just a couple pieces so you'd understand. So Michael tried to get a loan for a thousand dollars at the bank to try to get some tires and some work done on his vehicle. The bank would only advance him five hundred. So because Michael's, I mean, Michael's helped us out a lot. And I said, we tried to get him some tires for less expensive, and we did some work on his vehicle. So what I did is I have a copy of the repair order that we did and worked on the vehicle, and actually I have a copy of the tires that we purchased from Kyle's up the street. If you want a copy of those, you can take a look at them. I mean, I charged Michael the, it was $482 for everything. You can see even on the markup on the tires, it was just enough money to cover the half hours worth of labor that I paid my technician. He gets $25 an hour. So I don't understand what happened, because when, a week prior to that, Michael was really happy with the purchase, but it seemed as though the day after he got his sticker was when he started having problems with the tires. The day after he had everything squared away was when he seemed to be complaining about everything.
He says here that the tires, he says here, the tires that were put on, that you didn't balance them or you didn't align the front end of his vehicle. And he said that the vehicle was shaking and rattling all over the road. And he told that the tires were from, were with the same warranty. They were town fair tires. So he said he called, I guess he called you on October 2nd, and you never returned his call. He said he stepped in to get some advice. He wasn't happy with the tires. And he, he was told to get off the property, and if he didn't get off the property, he'd be arrested. And he said that ended the conversation.
Actually, he called me on the second. I had the voicemail on my phone.
And that, and this is when he filed a complaint, a consumer complaint form with the Attorney General's Office?
Yeah, Michael called me on the second. He left me a voicemail. And he came in the next day, and he said he wanted his money back for his tires. And I said, okay, guys, I, you know, there's no, he says, I've called everywhere, including Cooper. Cooper said I can get my money back. I said, no problem. As long as I can be made whole, you can be made whole. I have no problem giving you money back. He goes, no, you don't understand, Art, I want my money back. I says, no problem, Michael, I'll just call Cooper. If Cooper told you you can get your money back, let's call Cooper, see who you spoke with. If I can be made whole, you can be made whole, I'll give you your money back. No problem at all. And he said, no, I'm not going to eat these tires. I said, well, Michael, I'm not going to eat them either. Somebody told you you can get your money back, I'm more than willing to give it to you. He says, Art, I'm getting a lawyer. And he said, when he threatened me with a lawyer and other things that he stated, I said, you know what, this conversation's done, you can leave my property. So yes, I did state that to him.
So you tried to resolve it, but I mean, it's like the shoes, you know, once you wear them, I mean, who's going to take them back? Or the Cooper? In this case, they were willing to exchange for a different model, whatever they could do, but they don't give the money back. And, you know, it's like, it's, there's no way to, I mean, any shop out there, there's no way to return tires once you get them, unless they're defective. But they're not defective, they're just different model that he didn't like. Although, he was looking for the best deal, he had limited resources, that was the best deal for him. Nobody pushed him, I think he wrote in there that somebody pushed him into this purchase. Nobody pushed him in this purchase. He had limited budget, he had to meet, you know, certain requirements, and he agreed to it, you know, we would not go and buy tires for somebody without their agreement. That just doesn't make any sense. And we didn't even make any profit, and we just, you know, tried to help him. That's all it is. And, you know, he turned around and made it look like, you know, somebody just, you know, took, dropped his car, put the tires on, you know, didn't ask the management about it. But of course, you know, I understand he's unhappy, but, you know, we're in business of installing tires, we're not manufacturing the tires. I mean, it's, you know.
Manufacturing, I thought I had a copy of the email with all this stuff. Did you get it by any chance?
Probably not.
Because I had a copy of the email from Cooper, because I was actually on, that's how I found out about the issue, was that Cooper contacted me, and we emailed back and forth, and I had a, I had a copy of the, I apologize, I thought you had it with me. Where there was contact back and forth with Cooper stating that he was calling them, looking for his money back, they stated the same thing that everybody else told him, which is to be more than happy to exchange them, but not give you your money back. That is not how we do business, so.
And we had no motivation to sell them these Cooper tires if he wanted some other tires, because one of the tire distributors or something, you know, whatever the customer wants will order. It doesn't, you know, if you don't have any preference for selling Cooper tire or, you know, Goodyear tire, whatever, if that's what you want, that model, you know, we'll get it, as long as it's safe to drive. That's all. That's the basic idea.
And, I mean, I called Kyle's myself, with Michael standing next to me in my service department, and they were $85 a tire, and I said, how, can you give them a more price? And they said, no. I said, how much would you sell them to me for? And they told me, I mean, it was the $63, and I said, okay, I gotta pay him $12.50 or $12, $13 bucks, whatever it is, to put them on. Are you okay with that? He says, yes, that's why they're $76 instead of $85. So, I mean, even if you call Kyle's and find out, there was nothing made in the tires. There was no advantage taken to Michael at all.
We have a gentleman here that, tonight, and he, he brought his complaint in December 4th today, so would you like to come up?
Follow. Give him some suggestions.
I don't like speaking. I know Boris, and I know his brother Alex from JK and Auto down in Webster. When I met this gentleman, when I met Boris, it was October 2017, they just opened up. And his partner was a gentleman by the name of Christopher Cardenelli, who also had been employed down at JK Auto. I began negotiations. I heard this same repeated thing over and over. Low-income, elderly, disabled, I'm a disabled veteran myself, I broke my neck. I'm doing pretty well now. But there's, there's also a same pattern I'm hearing about the end result of complaints, which is, get the hell out or I'm going to have you arrested. Because this happened to me also. In this negotiation, I went in, Chris told me he bought a Jeep, it was down at JK Auto, and it was being repaired. It was in good shape, they were putting a motor in it, you know, he purchased for $5,000. It took about six weeks to finally get this Jeep here. Every week that they said they were going to be up with it, it was another. The motor was bad, they want, next week, they want to get better tires. These things might have, but it was a delay, delay, delay. Finally, right around the end of October, Jeep showed up, it was $8,000. I agreed that if I could get financing, and he said he'd go through the West of Federal Credit, again, to buy the vehicle. When the vehicle went up for financing, the bank would only allow me $7,000 on it. And I told Chris, I said, I don't have $1,000 to put in. He says, we can make a deal on this. Before I took off that day for the bank, Chris presented me with a, a weekly pay stub that he had made up. And he said, if you need this at the bank, use this. No, they're not going to give you the money based on what I presented to them, my honest income, my social security, my top part-time work. It ain't going to go. Went to the bank and they gave me the $7,000, and I came back with a check, and I presented it to him. And he proceeded to ask me what I had to make up the balance of the $1,000. I'm going to tell you, I'm proud to say this in public down here. Fifteen years prior to that, after I broke my neck, I became a medical marijuana, legal one. And I had a lot of grow up that I was willing to trade him for. I did. I gave him approximately $1,800 worth of lights and ballasts and equipment, which he negotiated in trade, and we made the transaction based on this. And I got the title, and, oh, the banker got the title, and, but before we finished, his mechanic and myself went, and my son, because I didn't have a vehicle, my son brought me there, went out and walked around the car to check it out, in which time I, both the mechanic, whose name was Don, your primary mechanic, who's involved in the transaction, with Chris Cardenelli, your owner, your partner. There was a tear in the top. There was only four tires, a spare tire was a, you know, there was big tires they put on it, and the small tire in the back, I said, you know, I need a spare tire, so I get a spare tire. My son put his hand underneath and put on, put his hand through a panel that holds the gas tank up. What did Don is, put duct tape on it, spray painted it black, and this will be fixed. I'm fine with this. They say they're going to do it, good. I believe it or not, I began employing with these people. I worked home for a month. I would run here into the registry, pick up checks down in Saugus, bring cars back and forth, transport. At the end of December, I got a, a letter, a phone call from the insurance company, Tumi Insurance, I think they say it was where it was done. And what it was is they had a problem payroll deduction, the insurance was going to be canceled. So I went into work, and I said, hey, Chris, can you, can you take care of this? Can you give me my pay so I can pay my, the insurance? He says, I got no money, but my wife's going to be in Webster, then she'll pay it. I said, great, thanks. Because you're doing us a favor, I'll bring you a collateral for this transaction. I'll bring you nine more of these electrical ballasts. You know, you're doing me a favor, I'm going to do you a favor. In collateral for the loan you give me until I can pay you off. Month later, I get news from the insurance company, the double payment done. Never paid the bill, never fixed the equipment, I can't get my equipment back. I went to the police station, and when I went to get it back, he said, get out or I'm going to call the cops. I own it, it's part of the Jeep change action. Went to the police department, they says, well, we've had a lot of complaints, seems like a silly problem, you're going to have to take them to court. They closed down. Before they closed down, they have a yacht sale over here. Chris Cardenelli throws a yacht sale. My son goes to the yacht sale, and he runs into this equipment. He confronts Mr. Cardenelli and says, that's my father's equipment. He says, your father owes me money for the Jeep, or this in public. My father owes you, your father owes me money for the Jeep, so I'll take the first 50 bucks I get, and he sold it. Right there in front of my disabled son, who's gone through Chiari surgery. I waited a couple of weeks, because I've got a patient, and I went down to JK Auto to talk to Alex and Boris, who was there but Chris Cardenelli. He threatened me with, if your son does, stops talking trash about me, I'm going to take him to court. I says, is Alex and Scott here? And they said, they don't want to talk to you, get out. So I got thrown out of there. July comes around, and I see it's open again. This gentleman, they talk about changing patterns, nothing's changed. I went in there in July, the first thing I says, is he, is this guy still tied up to this place? And this is why. And I explained him the story. He's, oh, no, no, he's not at all involved in this. And I'm saying, this is where, it's the same phone number. He says, bring it in now, I'll, I'll take care of that for you. Now, I can't afford to have it fixed. He's denied being involved with this gentleman, so I let it go. I come to the town hall, and I find Don's on me. I can find out if it, if he's still over there, have they taken out a new business permit? If they are. And that's when I find out that this meeting's coming up. It is still on... I waited a couple weeks, cause I've got a patient, and I went down to J K Auto to talk to Alex and Boris. Who was there but Chris Cardinelli? He threatened me with, if your son does, stops talking trash about me, I'm gonna take him to court. I says, is Alex and Scott here, and they don't wanna talk to you, get out, so I got thrown out of there. July comes around, and I see it's open here. This gentleman, they talk about changing patterns, nothing's changed. I went in there in July, the first thing I says, is he, is this guy still tied up to this place, and this is why? And I explained him the story, he's, oh, no, no, he's not at all involved in this, and I'm saying, this is where, it's the same phone number. He says, bring it in now, I'll, I'll take care of that for you. Now, I can't afford to have it fixed, he's denied being involved with this gentleman, so I let it go. I come to the town hall, and I find Don's on me, I can find out if they, if he's still over there, have they taken out a new business permit, if they are. And that's when I find out that this meeting's coming up, but it's still under the same ownership. So I tell the young lady my story, and she says, write it down. So, I caught with everything that I know now, I go over there and I said to a young lady at the front desk, I'm here to talk to Boris, and she, Boris who? Now Boris doesn't have anything to do with this place. I tell her the story, and all of a sudden Boris is in the meeting in the back room, so we meet up. So we meet up in the back room, I explain my story, and we just about work everything out, he wants to fix everything, with the exception of the equipment that his partner confiscated. I says, well, let me think about this, I came back today, and I told this gentleman over here, I says, I wanna talk to you about this, I think you're responsible for, you, you, your partner made a point in public of saying it was part of a Jeep transaction. He stole my equipment, if you make a million dollars with your partner, you share, he wanted to sell, Chris had nothing to do with me. We've gotten rid of him, we've gotten rid of our problem. I went in today, and he says, nope, this gentleman says, nope, we don't want a good guy come to the meeting tonight. So here I am, a year later, multiple times being told it's gonna take you, one time Chris told me, oh, the parts at J K, I went down to J K, no pops down there. So here I am, sitting here, I don't know what you can do for me, but I think you can do something for other people in this town. They haven't changed, they haven't even begin to change. This man wasn't honest in July when I asked him, he used to connect with this in order to solve my problem, and he tried to reflect it, he wasn't forthright. He may not be partners, but he was involved, and this is a pattern, I don't think it's gonna change, they're not helping me.
We, we have had, these are the three written ones we have had, and we had a lot of verbal complaints where people wouldn't come in.
Yeah, people are scared.
Yeah, they're scared, they wouldn't put in a writing, they've been down to talk to, uh, the police and everything, and the police have told them, they really couldn't do too much about it. And the best thing to do is verbal complaint, and come up here and give it to us, and it's time.
And I, I think the one that went to the attorney general is because, I, I know I had a conversation with the police awhile, and I can recommend it, that they direct it to the attorney general.
That's what they were gonna do.
So there's a valid business permit or not?
Yeah, now, who's the business certificate in now?
Well, it's not, it's a liquor license.
Not a liquor license.
As far as, as far as, we're, board of selectmen is a liquor license, you'd have to talk to Mike about the business permit, they do have a business. Well, no, we do the auto dealer, we do the auto dealer.
Right, right, right. No, you said liquor.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Auto dealer.
I'm sorry, we're doing the liquor, no. But the thing is, I know.
They probably have pure complaints if they were selling liquor instead of cars.
Have, have you come up and taken out a, a new business certificate with the town clerk, and with the change of people that are running the business now?
Can we please respond to this?
Yeah, can I respond to what you just stated?
Yeah, cause, you know, that's a nice story, and of course, but please.
All right, I responded, all right.
Cause that's just one side of the story.
I did see him in July, cause actually when he came in the other day asking for a three thousand dollar check for his ballast. I recognized him, I asked him if he was a gentleman in the yellow Jeep. In July, I did offer to repair his vehicle, after hearing his story. If you check with the police department, you'll notice that I have a complaint in there, against Chris Cardinelli ever coming into the establishment, ever. So you can check with them, there is a complaint on file from me personally, to keep him out of the establishment.
And who are you, sir?
I'm just the manager there.
What's your name, though?
Arthur Master Mateo.
Okay.
So, my history in the industry is forty years long. My job prior to coming to this place is to come into stores and repair them when they're dysfunctional. My job is to make sure everything is legal, upright, forthright, and make sure everything is taken care of properly. So, um, yes.
And when did you start with the organization?
I came into the organization July twenty-second, was when I unlocked the door. And then probably four or five people a day came walking in there, telling me what I owed them. So I do understand what you've heard.
Yeah.
I'm not, I am not unaware of what's been going on there.
So we have a valid business permit, as I understand it. Karen?
Um, well, it's good, the one that he has now is it's a class two license, and it's good until the end of twenty eighteen, he's applying for the new one for twenty nineteen, and that's why we're having the error. And it's all under Boris's name, he's the one who, who the license has been earned.
So if a complaint comes in tomorrow, who gets notified?
If a complaint, it's, it's, uh, gonna be Boris.
It's still Boris, right?
That would be a beautiful situation, if I know right away what's happening, that's really what needs to happen.
I've spoken to probably, I've met probably forty percent of this town just in, gosh, just in complaints, that people have told me things that have happened. And even regards to Michael, and just, again, I understand what Michael, what happened when Michael went way, way, way overboard. I mean, Michael invited me to his seventy-second birthday party, and it was canceled by his friends, and I personally took him to the tavern that night for his birthday. So I don't understand how it got to be at that level, and which it got to be. So, um, I even asked friends of his that. This gentleman was in my store yesterday, I was in between auctions, I was at CarMax auction in the morning, and I went to the Norwood auction in the afternoon. He asked for me for my time, he asked that the fifteen hundred dollars would be more acceptable than the three thousand dollars he was looking for, two days earlier when Lois was in to get an oil change. When he burst in the door, he did not, nobody played stupid that Boris was there, we all know who Boris is. So again, it's unfortunate what is being happening here. When Michael got upset with me, with the other things that Michael said about his attorney was, I know your reputation, I can say anything about your store, everybody will believe me. I know what I'm dealing with over there. It really is unfortunate what happened in an eight-month span, it's ridiculous. I love what I do for work, I'm very proud of what I do for work, I don't like what people do to my industry at all. It's a, it can be very helpful to a lot of people. Um, it's a nice neighborhood, it's a nice area that this is around here. I've met a lot of people, I've done a lot of community service around here, and been able to meet a lot of people that way. I mean, we were at the tree lighting with the Rotary Club in Moran, I've been to the Rotary Club meetings over at the tavern, I've met Lynn, I've, I mean, we've met a lot of people through here. I even, I mean, every month we do something different. Um, last month we did the Toys for Tots one, we were calling everybody. And I mean, my girls took a beating, if you can imagine this, a beating calling around for Toys for Tots. Because they would say that, you know, we're calling for Toys for Tots, we gave away synthetic oil changes, which are eighty-nine dollars most places if you go to them. For, if you bring us a toy for a tot, we'll give you an oil change for free. If you don't need one, we'll give you a certificate, you can give it to somebody as a gift, or bring them back another time. And if it's something you're interested in, and they say yes, and they go, okay, where are you calling from, calling from Brookfield Auto, no, and slam the phone down on them. I know what I'm dealing with there, it's horrible, it's horrible what happened, it is horrible. But we've offered to help him, I've offered to fix his car twice, and he's refused both times. That part is also horrible.
We had a customer, as soon as we changed the management, there was a customer that came in.
Wait, 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 what, why did we let, no, why did we let Boris finish?
There was a customer that came in, she, even though it was out of warranty, out of everything, she came with the Highland, Toyota Highlander, whatever. She needed four new tires, she needed a motor in the back of her, you know, wiper, whatever. I took out of my personal money, eight hundred dollars, just to get the reputation good after all this. And I bought parts, and we, you know, changed the tires, we did everything we were supposed to do, I didn't even say anything. Because that's important, so that people think it's all perfectly fine. But again, I don't run businesses like this, okay, if I have a legitimate complaint that comes to me, I deal with it, I don't hide from it, I don't hide from any customers. It's not my style, but the problem is, in this type of situation, I found out about, about these things, like, kind of in a layer state where it's supposed to be, and I'm just trying to change that if I can, which means, you know, that we can deal with it right away. Now, you know, it might look like something else from the, from outside or whatever, but really, if I get, I'm, I'm for resolution of problems, and specifically not this way or any other way, okay, there's much easier way, you talk to people, okay? So, but, in order to talk to people, you need to know what's going on. And in order to know what's going on, obviously, you know, unfortunately, sometimes, you know, you can't be there like twenty-four hours a day, sometimes, you know, you trust people to do the right thing for you, and they don't perform, and then you find out all this bunch of problems. And another thing, what I wanna mention is that we do not deal in any other property but financial instruments, which is cash, uh, you know, check, uh, whatever, Mastercard, Visa. We don't barter, we don't do anything, so what was done here is very, very unfortunate, but we don't deal, we, as a business, we don't deal with any financial instruments except money. Okay, so, um, I mean, unfortunately, this was kind of deals made and all this stuff. I find out, like, he came to our business and talked to me about the situation, was it three days ago?
Yes, I, I finally caught up with it.
Right, so three days, three days ago, I found out about this whole situation.
We heard about Boris in July, and your manager had been forthright, and said, oh, yeah, you know what, Boris, he's a cheat, throw it over these little things.
He had the motivation, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, he had a reason to talk.
Just one at a time, please.
Yeah, but my point is, if I had the communication somehow, even simple letters, you know, in the name of the business, cause I pick mail. So it would not have bypassed me in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, if there's been an issue that's come in the door that was an actual blatant issue, he did know about his fuel tank, I did get approval from him to fix it. He did know about the Highlander, cause the young lady came in, and it was an alignment issue, it was not a tire issue, we replaced all four tires, we did replace the wiper motor. We did replace all those things because of a thirty-nine dollar alignment that she should have had, and she was promised when she bought the truck. The tires should have lasted long.
This is not in my best interest to do these types of things. I might as well close the doors, why do I need business like this? You know, we want customers to be happy.
I was, I was, I, personally, I was happy to see you, uh, coming into town, because, you know, we need more business here in town. But it just seems, ever since you've been here, we've heard complaints, and I mean, if you're gonna stay in business, I just, I hope we don't hear any more of these complaints.
Exactly.
So have you maintained any documentation about things that you've set right since you've taken over?
Like, um, I mean, I haven't really put anything down in writing, we've just kind of done whatever we've done. I mean, I haven't said, you know, I haven't put a list of, here's a list of all the good things we've done. I mean, I can put something together if you'd like to, but.
I mean.
There's things I haven't done, because I knew this meeting was coming.
Right, well, there may be some things that you, you haven't done, because you know, know that this meeting is coming, okay? But one of the things that, that I kind of take issue with is that, I would presume, and I don't know what kind of financial interest, the other, who was the other manager that you're saying it was let go?
Christopher Cardinelli used to be the manager.
Okay. So did, did he have any, he did, did he have any financial?
No.
He, was he dismissed, did he leave of his own accord?
I asked him to leave. Because this, uh, you know, I've heard, aside from these complaints, I've heard some other things, but I didn't know the magnitude, obviously. Uh, but, uh, I, you know, we decided that that's the best way, because, you know, and obviously, Arthur here is the complete opposite. So, and you can see, like, from July, I believe, unless you can tell me otherwise, except for Mike, there's nothing there. So you can maybe check, I don't think.
We don't have a.
I mean, I can give you letters from people that we know.
This one, this one doesn't, this one doesn't have a date on it.
And another thing is, no, when we do these things for community, for people, it's not because we want, because of the hearing, or because of any other things. It's good for business, it's good for the community, it's good for everybody, it's not done because of this hearing. I mean, has nothing to do with it, we want a good reputation, not bad reputation. And obviously, there were some things that were done to diminish the reputation, but we're doing everything. We're spending our own time, calling people and explaining, you know, and doing this, you know, uh, Toys for Tots program, that's our own money we're investing, to do this, to help community, to help whoever it's helping to, so it's not about.
It's just to kind of get the people to come in and say, and meet us and see who we really are. Because, yes, you're right, I mean, it's, it's fearful, you hear these stories, and for the girls to be hung up on, we're talking about a Toys for Tots program. It's a helpful, it's a beautiful program.
Well, yeah, you know what, I get it, but I tell you what, we are all so inundated with frickin' phone calls from, you know, and you never know who's truly on the other end of the phone, that you can say, I'm from the, the.
Oh, no, I understand that, yes, I understand.
All right, uh, uh, you could, you could be Mother Teresa, you could get hung up on in this day and age, so I'm just.
Okay, we, um, yeah, no, Sharon.
Sharon, I know Sharon had her hand up.
Um, you'll have to pardon my voice, I'm getting over broadcast, I'm chair of the planning board. Some months ago, I got a call from a gentleman who told me that he owned Dunphy's Tavern in East Brookfield, and said he had been approached by someone from Brookfield Auto, asking him to run yard sales over flea markets, weekly, at this business. And he asked me, as a member of the planning board, what would be required. Well, I talked with Jeff Taylor, and Jeff informed me that this would need a permit. So I informed this gentleman, you need a permit for this, and moreover, the planning board would probably want to see that you had permission from, first of all, Brookfield Auto, and second of all, permission from the owner of the property that is being leased by Brookfield Auto. I never heard from this gentleman again, to not eat, I heard that a yard sale slash flea market was held on the property. The other question I have is, there are tractor trailers, the last time I checked, from InterCity Lines sitting on your property. I'd like to know what relationship those trailers have to your business. InterCity Lines is located down the street, Route nine toward Westbrook Field. What are those trailers doing on your property?
Can you, uh, give us the dates of these things?
No, I can't, because I didn't expect this to come up tonight.
Sure.
But I'd like to know what those trailers were doing on your property.
Remember, Mr. Summers, I had them back then, it's like, back when I was a month from the.
Are they still there?
No, 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 they've been, oh, we had them.
Yeah, no, we were, when they were there.
We got there in July, they were there.
Yeah, we complained, and they took them out.
Mr. Cardinelli had.
Because they weren't supposed to be there?
Correct.
Right.
How did somebody get tractor trailers on your property without you knowing about it?
It seems that Mr. Cardinelli had them renting five hundred dollars a month he was collecting from this.
That's another one of those things.
Yes.
Um, I heard from, is that Mr. Cardinelli had a criminal record?
Yeah.
I can't confirm that, so I'm not surprised hearing this.
Yeah, we all heard that.
The, uh, the third question I have is, I checked your website about the time that this gentleman called, and I just checked it again now. The only, the only contact method you have on the website is a form that is done through the website, and the address of the business. I don't know how often you're on the property, but people, let me explain, please, people complained that they were sending documents to you, or sending plates to you, and they would disappear. I'd like to know who is in charge of checking the website for contact information? And if there's a second address, Mr. Positive Albert, that you can be contacted, excuse me, contacted directly without going through the business address?
I will double check on that, but if I understand correctly, um, the information that you put on website goes to my email as well. So I'm not sure, but I'll double check on it.
Yeah, Infoware, Brookfield Autos.
Okay, when the person doesn't have a computer, how can they contact you directly? Because I know you own a number of businesses around the state.
Right.
And the addresses for your personal mailing address are not the, the address of this business. So how can people contact you directly if they do not wanna go through Brookfield Auto?
Well, the simplest way is if they write to Fourteenth Post Road, it will go, because we rent the P O box, because the mail service does not deliver there. So it will be forwarded to the P O box where, which is for the business here in town.
The way the postal service operates, sir, is if you have a P O box, you need to put the P O box on the letters. The P O box doesn't appear anywhere on your website.
Okay, we'll correct that, we'll correct that.
I even had the, an overnight packet that I had to go pick up today, that came in from Florida, and it went to the post office, they wouldn't deliver to our address.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll put it on, on, on the website as well.
What I'm saying is, sir, you have to keep better tabs on what's going on in your business, number one, so that items, things that are happening that are not permitted under the zoning bylaws don't happen. And number two, you have to make it easier for your customers to contact you without fear that their letters will disappear somehow between the time you mailed and the time that you picked up the mail at Fourteenth Post Room.
Okay, so we'll make sure the information is there.
Thank you, Sharon.
So, that brings up the point. So that the address that we have on the permit for the auto, does it have the correct?
Post office.
Post office box.
Well, I'll have to check it out, let's ask.
No, let's, let's check now.
On paper, we could not ask.
You have, we have the, we sent you a new renewal.
Right.
And the set address on that renewal, that's why she just won't tell us.
Both the comments that we.
Yeah, right here. It's right there.
Is it correct? So we have the correct address.
I don't know if this is, I think I typed this in, I'm not sure what you have in your, okay, so this is for a renewal type. Maybe, it's not.
This has, this has Fourteenth Post Road, Brookfield, man.
But that's the license, that's not our contract. Yeah.
Okay, Karen.
So I'll put back, so, all right.
Because I, um, we should have, Boris, we should have where we, Karen can get in touch with you, maybe. touch with you, maybe personally, family member and everything, in case we have more complaints come in.
Yes, I'd like to...
Hope we don't have any complaints.
Well, I mean, if any other complaints come in, I think, and, well, like you said, you wanted to hear directly...
No, no, definitely.
From us, you know?
Yes.
What these complaints are, so that you can solve them immediately.
Yes, yes.
Because, I mean, you know, it doesn't give the town a very good reputation with the business coming in, you know, it's bad, so people can think, any kind of business can think they can come in here and, you know, you know, pull, do the same thing that was going on earlier in your business. So, we want reputable businesses here in the town.
Sure.
I have a question for you, Madam Karen. It sounds like we still have an unresolved complaint here, so, it, but it sounds like you all have had negative exchanges, so, so it's, it's potentially not gonna get resolved between the two of you independently. So, what portion of, and I'm sorry, sir, I'm gonna mess up your name.
Brio.
I'm sorry?
Brio. Brio.
Yeah.
Brio.
Okay. What portion of his concerns or claims did I hear you concede that needed to get addressed with regards to his vehicle?
Well, in regards to his vehicle, we offered twice, he had a fuel tank issue where it was sagging, where it was falling out of the car in July, and I'm assuming it still is, unless you, have you fixed it as of yet?
No, I haven't fixed it.
Right, so, we offered in July, look at it and fix it at no charge, and we offered again the other day to fix it at no charge. That's not the complaint though, is it? It's the ballast.
Three, oh, yeah, correct.
It's a reimbursement for the ballast that you, and Mr. Cardinelli exchanged, which has nothing to do with the auto purchase.
It sounded like, it sounded like there was also supposed to be direct, direct withdrawal from his paycheck while he was an employee that was going to pay his insurance.
No, what, what happened was, it was direct payroll from my private bank, from my sub-security check. But they tried to get it out too early, and they could only do it once. So, when that happened, they stopped making the payment. So, there's anything to do with these gentlemen. I'd been working for them, they owe me some money, and that's how I asked for the loan to pay the, or the advance to pay the insurance company. But as far as the office to repair, the reason I didn't take them up on it in July is obvious, because he said he had no connections, thereby I couldn't understand why he would be doing this for nothing, you know, fix it. And there were three items. There's a torn top, which originally was just either supposed to be stitched or welded or something, and a tie top, uh, the tire to match the four other tires, so if there's a flat you can drive it, and the downset. There were three items, and the fourth item was the ballast that he, his employer, so, his employee, he says, "Now, I'll talk to him," and wouldn't let me get him in the shop. And I didn't ask for that amount of money, I told them what they were retail worth, and told them, "Listen, they were used, I'd take fifty percent, but I think you took them. I'd like to get reimbursed for these things." And that's where the difficulty came the second time we spoke, was they didn't feel they wanted to do that, and he wanted to do the repair just on the tank, and there was other items, all of them.
Do you have the telephone number and the P O box?
I called to the business, and when we gave them the application, they had to send the personal phone number, so he, I don't have his personal phone number, because on the last license it wouldn't have been him.
Not Richard.
A question, it's just, I've been listening to all this, and I'm saying, why are people needing to complain to selectmen for a business? They should have a, a, a procedure set up to handle complaints on their own, so it shouldn't have to go to the selectmen.
You think?
Yeah, it's like, you guys employed by these guys, so you, we, the town paying a salary to take care of these guys' complaints? If you gotta complain, it should go to you, it's when they can't get handled, when they get threatening and bullying, that you can't do it, and you gotta come here. I've been doing this here, this is baloney. If you didn't have all this, wouldn't even be getting, and I see it. He says he's talked and heard about all these problems, but nobody's asked him, "How many have you fixed?"
Well, actually, I did. I have documentation that they had, so...
I gotta go, I don't think this is gonna be resolved. Looks like it goes back to where I said, I gotta go court with this thing.
Well, well, that's your decision, if that's your decision, that's what you have to do.
I'd like it to be otherwise.
Yeah, because we have other businesses we have to take care of, but the thing is though, you know, if we do have complaints come in, we will...
Please.
We will send them.
Please.
Karen will call you immediately. Now, just, do you have Karen's, Karen, do you have the other gentleman's phone name and his phone number?
Well, I just received Boris's, and you wanna give mine, keep yours.
Yeah, do you have one for Karen? So, maybe we can keep everything above board and honest down there, it's a business.
Okay, yeah, there you go, that's the easiest way.
Okay.
So, there's no issue.
What also happened too is that people complained to the police, the police told me.
Yeah, the police told me.
That's my direct cell, my personal email, so everybody can...
All right, thank you.
No problem.
All right.
All right, okay, so we'll go, and, we'll end hearing now, and we'll start then.
Thank you.
So, do we have a business permit, do we have?
We've got to check into that, because that's another thing, we have to check on a business certificate with the town clerk and find out whose name is on that, because if, if Mr. Cardinelli's name is on that, we'll have, you'll have to come up and take out another business certificate.
So, what's our, what's our next meeting, perhaps, we really just need to...
Our next meeting, the eighteenth.
Maybe we need to reconvene then, before we make a decision on the business license.
Yeah, I know his name's on there, because I looked personally before I would even come on board to make sure that.
Okay, but you should come up to the town clerk. He, he's here till, till eight o'clock tomorrow. He comes in at two.
Okay.
He comes in at two, and he's here until eight, so you should come in and, you know, take out a new certificate with him.
What boards?
Yeah.
Or four boards, everything's still in his...
But, hold on, I'm not understanding.
But you're managing, both of you should probably come up.
You mean, what kind of certificate then?
It's a business certificate, what it does, it registers your business here in the community.
Okay, even though it's registered at the state?
Yeah, you have to also do one with the town.
Okay.
And we, yeah, we should reconvene this hearing probably until our next meeting to make sure all of this has been done, if you want to come back up. And that's what, the eighteenth?
The eighteenth, yeah.
Eighteenth, and we'll put you on for the first one, maybe at...
Okay, I'll come first on the agenda.
At six-thirty on the agenda.
Okay.
Do you have the application, did you fill it out?
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, is that really the application? Because I got common vicryl, vicrylizer license, is that really what's for the...
No, it's a class two license.
I, I did the class two as well, because I figured, you know, it might be a wrong application or something. Vicryl is...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's like alcohol related or something, yeah.
Okay.
And thank you, by the way. Thank you very much for your time. I'm actually looking forward to this.
So, I have, I would strongly recommend if what you're doing right now, you supposedly made me think right, that you start documenting the fact that you're working to do that, and that if you have an additional, from a standpoint of what you've done to some things, right? I, I, I would strongly advise that, because really, I still have some heartburn with the, oh gee, we weren't aware any of this was going on. Gee, but gee, there's no real way to contact you. I think, you know what, I hate to put this way, though, when it walks like a duck, it tracks like a duck, it's a duck.
I understand.
If you're really walking like a goose, then that's great, but let's actually have the visual.
I understand.
Good, let's keep going.
Okay, we'll get finished up. I just want to ask, oh, do you have the insurance certificate, the workers comp liability?
Uh, yeah, I can text it if you want. I don't have it right now.
Have it for the next meeting.
Yeah.
We have it for the next meeting, where we convene.
Just the workers comp?
I believe that's it, alcohol is...
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is to sign the twenty-nineteen common vicryl license and the class two license. Okay, we have one here for, uh, the clam box.
I'm gonna do them as a package?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna do, and it's a package. We have one for the clam box, uh, White's Landing, uh, Cumberland Farm, and this one is for the Dollar General, Bay Path Spirits, Boswell Enterprises, which is Central Street package. And this one is for Brookfield Congregational Church, and then this one is for Brookfield Rod and Gun Club, uh, it's, what it is, it's a common vicryl's license for entertainment license in the jukebox. Another one for Tip Top Country Store, and that's it, and I'd like a motion that we approve, and we'll start signing.
And the next package? In the next package?
Yeah.
The jukebox, excuse me. Probably all the entertainment, I'm also... Sorry, it just kills me. Oh, oh, Karen, I know Mike had taken care of this, uh, when I contacted him once before, but I got another complaint from a resident about cleanliness in the milk cooler over at Dollar General.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they said it had been really good right after he went out and reached out to him, and then it went all that heck in a handbasket after that, so, if you mention it to him next time you see him, and see if he'd, see if he'd do his magic again to convince him to... That'd be nice.
Well, he should probably send an inspector down, health inspector should probably go down.
But at least, at least let him know, whatever the appropriate party is for him to involve in it, because...
Here, I'll give you the whole folder.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna pull the one for, yeah, so pull the one for, yeah, we want to give that one for Brookfield Autumn, because this and the lake, he ends up with Sharon, I don't know.
Oops.
Okay.
Just get going, I'll get these things.
And then I would also like, um, to make a motion to, um, sign all of the, what are these?
Class two.
Class two licenses, we have two of them here. We have one for, um, Richard Ross, which is B and D Coachworks, and the other one is for David Home of the Home Auto Group LLC. Motion to sign these.
Motion to sign.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I believe it's a year on Home Auto Group.
I don't know. It's having some success, I'm sure.
Next, and those two, please, Kathy.
Okay.
Okay, she has, I asked for the two, except those parts.
Right.
The reason for the condition is just, I want those... Which, by the way, we do put at the end, I don't know if you noticed, but at the end of the, um, the agenda, it's not, it's a, that's the thing, the open media accommodations, people need it.
Okay, we have, um, the next on our agenda is to, um, accept the ADA policy and grievance policies, procedure, procedure policy. And these were done up by Kathy LaRocca, who is also our grant writer. And she's the ADA coordinator?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right, and, um, she's in accordance with the American, Americans with Disabilities Act, the town of Brookfield has adopted the following policy to address requests for reasonable accommodations made by people with disabilities in its employment, services, activities, policies, procedures, and regulations. Uh, citizens and employees or applicants for employment of the town of Brookfield with qualified disability should address any requests for accommodation, accommodation to the town ADA coordinator using the reasonable accommodation request form available on the town's website or from the office of the administrative, administrative coordinator or select board. Written requests should be sent to, it says, and here in parentheses, she's got, "Ultimate means of filing a request such as a personal interview, phone calls, or tape request will be made available for persons with disability if unable to communicate their request in writing." And you can send them here to ADA coordinator in care of the Brookfield Selectmen's Office, Town Hall, Sixth Central Street, Brookfield, Mass, zero-one-five-zero-six, or phone five-oh-eight-eight-six-seven-two-nine-three-zero, or they can be faxed, five-oh-eight-eight-six-seven-five-zero-nine-one.
A motion to approve and accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's nothing, we don't have to sign any.
Nothing, and then it's grievance.
Kathy, Kathy LaRocca is the ADA coordinator for that.
Yeah, the grievance is a part of it.
The grievance, the grievance too.
Is part of the ADA. The grievance for that.
All right. My next thing here is retirement and a resignation.
The grievance policy, do we have to accept that?
Oh, we have to accept this one too?
Separately, okay.
Oh, they have, oh, okay.
So...
Okay, okay, I would like a motion to accept the grievance procedures.
You've got that motion.
Second.
Any, um...
Right, just so it's clear, this is the grievance process, that should ADA not be...
Yeah, this is under the American with Disabilities Act also.
Right.
Do we have any discussion at all?
Puts us in compliance.
At a high level, what's the, the, what's there in writing? Is it basically that you contact the coordinator and then you can...
Yeah, she's got it there.
Okay, perfect.
Kathy LaRocca.
Basically what she read her...
Okay.
Yeah, well, well, I understand that's the policy, but just the grievance procedure is just to contact the coordinator.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is retirement and a resignation. Okay, we have a, this came from the library. Arthur Putnam, who has been there, um, who's worked for eight years, is retiring from the, uh, the library, and so, uh, you know, we'll accept this retirement, we're sad to see him go, because he's done a very good job, I understand, over at the library, and we want to wish him, uh, good luck in all of his future endeavors.
Motion to...
Motion to accept.
Accept the resignation or retirement.
All in favor?
Aye.
And our next one here too is for, from Michael Blanchard, the chief, uh, to accept Reserve Officer Alex Johnson's letter of resignation, because he has accepted a full-time position in Littleton, Mass. He served the residents of Brookfield for the past two and a half years as part-time, and I wish him well in his future endeavors, and motion to accept it.
Motion to accept.
Second.
And I also wish Officer Johnson, uh, wish him well in his future endeavors.
Those in favor?
Hmm? A lot in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we know, do we know how chief, chief's doing overall in maintaining enough reserve[1761.52] officers?
No, we'll have to check with him. He didn't mention anything. Okay, well, I'm gonna ask for approval for all of these.
Yes.
At one time. Okay. These are some more of our, um, special youth permits for, um, the lake.
The bonds, yeah.
Okay, for Quaybar Pond. This is from the New England, uh, Bass, Mass West, it's called. Uh, this one is from Q Q L A for South Pond. And the other one is Q Q, Q Q L A Association for South Pond. And let's see, then we have, uh, the Last Cast Anglers, that's for South Pond. And then Q Q L A again for Quaybar Pond. And, and then we have another one for Extreme Bass Fishing Club on the Quaybar Pond. And I'd like to have a motion to, uh, have these signed and then these permits.
Motion to approve.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we have anything on it.
Yes, you wanted to discuss the, the.
This one?
If that's the summer.
Is that what you want?
Do you want to discuss that with the other?
Do you want to put this on the other or we want to do this and that?
Uh, I think that this is, uh, this was discussed under the earlier.
Okay, okay.
So, so, uh, if I'm unsuccessful, then we'll put this on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, okay. And under correspondence, the only thing we have was that, uh, the Mass Works grants that was put in, we, it wasn't, we was not awarded to the town of Brookfield. So we hope maybe better luck next time.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn at eight oh five?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
May I?
Sure, Dawn.
Just quickly, um, I wanted to give you an update on the water superintendent search. We, uh, have published the announcement. We are accepting applications. Uh, we have also ensured that we have, uh, a superintendent to cover us for the time that Jim is, is not here and that, uh, he will continue on until we have a new superintendent, permanent superintendent. And there'll be a little bit of overlap as well. So I just wanted to let you know that that, that process is all in place. So there should be no interruption in any of our, uh, water service. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that there is a, uh, the survey that has gone out to the south side of, uh, town, uh, and asked people that if they get those surveys, uh, please get them in. Very important that we get those responses so that we get a true representation of what people's thoughts are on, on the extending of water lines. Um, a couple of other quick things. Um, I know that you are aware of some vandalism that has occurred along Route Nine. Uh, the trees that Apple Seed, uh, put in, we put in thirteen new cherry trees, uh, last fall. Of the thirteen trees, eight have been damaged. Uh, they've been broken off right, uh, below the, the tree growth. Um, then there was some vandalism down at the cemetery. And then there was, I guess, some vandalism last week. So there, there is an occurrence of vandalism along the Route Nine stretch. And I would ask that, I know that the police department is working on that. If anybody sees anything, uh, if there, anybody happens to have a, a security camera and they pick up anything on that, I would certainly request that they, um, help the police in, in searching and, um, you know, the, the damage to the trees, they're probably not going to survive. Uh, so we're over, um, close to $2,000, you know, over a thousand, close to 2,000 for the damage that was done to the trees. So unfortunately, uh, you know, this is a, a new occurrence in town. So hopefully we can, we can stop it. Um, the other thing I just wanted to mention, that the water level is still up in, in the lakes. We're still, uh, three feet over my dock. You know, there are many docks still, still in the water. So I don't know if you're in contact with East Brookfield or whether they're talking to you about what their schedule is on opening.
Have you heard anything?
They were.
Sorry, he's reminding me of something else that I gotta bring up real quick.
So I think they were talking about delaying it indefinitely, but.
Oh, I heard they were talking about delaying it for three weeks.
And Ken's.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it has to be.
So Ken's our, Ken Cleveland is coordinator.
Okay, all right.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Um, just one thing, I, I, I received a, a contact from Pear Construction that's handling the East Brookfield, um, bridge work that's gonna have to happen on Quaybar Street. Uh, they, they need, and I, I just forwarded the email to Karen like today, um, but we need to put, probably put it on the agenda for the eighteenth. Um, there's a, they need some sort of certification from us that we're okay with the takings, even though all the takings are state or, or town land. Uh, that, and it's the temporary taking for them to be able to reroute traffic and put construction equipment. Um, it sounds like that there is an allowance under Mass General law that would allow us to, um, accede to that. What we probably need is a statement from ConCon, uh, Highway Superintendent and Police Chief. Uh, but we can go over it in detail at the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
But I just want to make certain that, uh, you all are aware that they were in contact. Cause I had reached out to them after Dawn had raised the issue back in the fall. And then they didn't want to get anything on the town meeting. And then literally like the week after the town meeting, they contacted me, um, saying now that they, they didn't want to go through this procedure to, to get the authorization. So I'll get all the, the paperwork together and we can talk about it at next meeting.
Okay, I have one more thing. Okay, um, on behalf of myself and the Board of Selectmen, I would like to express our sympathies to James Booth, who was our water superintendent, and to his family because they had a death in the family within the past week. So our sympathies go out to them. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?